Hello.
Did you reach the register?
Roughly?
Yep. Yeah, I just, I, no, I didn't reply as being too hard. No, you just. I did? Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, if I don't do something right away, then I don't. No, you think it's. The two second goal is it's not in front of me, two seconds later, it's come. Hi. Hi, good.
Uh-oh. I already did it. Oh. And I said, I wasn't gonna do that.
Did you silence your phone?
Yeah, uh-huh. I took that, ringing up, that alarm. Your charger for your phone? Not that you're done? I mean, for your computer.
So, um, I'll just send it. Just, I don't know. I've known. I started with my. I'm just not getting either. Yeah, but I was, I was, I was kinda like.
Hmm.
And then some. I need to.
Ow. Laughing my water out. No, I didn't.
Hold on. That's a check by. Yeah, right. Yeah, I see. I mean, it was from. She's gonna, I think we're gonna email this shit back. Wait, Jamie, I won't be for tonight if you want to have James come in. Maybe you can help support me, James, uh, too. James is the retired recreation coordinator from Topman and also. Oh, sorry, how many years?
Just, uh, between Wapto and Topman, so there's eight months shy of twenty years.
Oh, wow. Know your job then, huh?
I would, I'd like to think I do.
She's the expert I, I saw them when we had a new recreation person. To bring in somebody who could really help guide her.
Good idea.
Mental research, since she started very much.
Did you find a place for the puppies?
What's that?
Did you find a place for the puppies?
Yep. Yeah. Oh, they were, the one, well, they've gotta be brother and sister. One was, looked like a red healer, and the other one, just a cute little black one. And, uh, yeah, but you know, that's the thing about going out and picking them up is, uh, nobody wants to foster. And I'm not, I'm one of them too, because I, I rescued one pup. And I had it there for a week, yeah, no problem, I got it backyard. Oh, yeah, it's playing with my dogs back there. And then when I took it to Yakima, I found out it had giardia. And cost me over three hundred dollars to do all my dogs. And I just, I told the rescue, I cannot bring them home, because I, I cannot afford it. If they have anything that they give to mine, they.
Jenna's looking at this fifteen year old. Like, it makes something, you know, when it's left at the house. People are going to feed it, but they leave it to her, you know? And she's like, oh, you should take it in. No, Michael kiddens get along with other dogs, he doesn't get along with cats, does he? You know, what are you gonna do when you come home and it kill the cat?
Plus, the old ones, you know, you gotta take them to the vet. I mean, they always got problems, and they're like us, huh? Yeah. I know.
Yeah, my heart bleeds for these guys, but.
I know, it, uh.
I got the room and the space and the money, yeah, I have almost every spray.
Oh, I know, me too. But I've learned, I can't. And especially.
Neverland Ranch, I can spend some of them all in there, you know? Until then, it ain't gonna happen.
About everyone out there has Parvo anymore. It's, uh, and McGregor's due for his shots. Next week, it took me three weeks to get an appointment for vaccination.
You don't, it's free, you just click it. Let me try to hot.
I've gotta get into the packet, right?
You're into it.
But it doesn't say all the.
No.
Just the tenure.
A workshop, you don't get that. Only if it's a approved thing, it goes over.
Okay, okay, quick listen for it.
Yeah, you can look all you want, it's there.
I'm starting to freak out, it's six twenty-nine.
We got Project Kane, classification of recreation coordinator and swim team contract.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. As I wanted to, uh, see Councilor. Run. All right, welcome everybody to the Sunniteside City Council Workshop Meeting for Monday, May two, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, ask the city clerk to call the role.
Mayor Burden? Mayor Sushi?
Here.
Counselor Bealer?
Here.
Counselor Farmer?
Here.
Counselor Ripley?
Here.
Counselor Hicks?
Here.
Counselor Hart? City Manager Alba?
Here.
City Commissioner, I'm here, Finance and Administration Services Director, Horner?
Here.
Fire Department?
Here.
Luis Chivacareta, it is due, Public Works Director Fisher?
I'm here.
All right, thank you. All right, item one on is our active agenda. First item on our active agenda is an update for Project Kane. Something we're all eagerly waiting to hear, absolutely.
And I'm going to come over to Stephanie Ray with HLA, and she is going to, uh, give you a high level PowerPoint on Project Kane.
I was a council, City Manager. Sure, thank you for having us here tonight. So I'm talking with, uh, Joe Schmidt, Yakima County Development Association. We'll get a little further in the presentation, Joe's gonna stand up and give council a little overview about, uh, what Yakima County Development Association, YCPA, does, and what they could potentially do with this project. So Project Kane, uh, most, not all of you have heard some whispers about it. It is a potential economic developer that is interested in coming into City of Sunniteside, uh, mainly, uh, more on the south side, uh, currently court property, and located at the intersection of Alexander and Highway Two Bridge Waterway. We'll get going on the presentation, and I'll talk a little bit more about it. But what we are really here today is talk about this economic developer and its unique opportunities to continue public infrastructure in an area that is relatively undeveloped. So not only are we gonna talk about today will serve this development, but also open up hundreds of acres that could be used for other economic development opportunities. So it, it is a, um, excuse that, uh, Bellingham term, but it's a pretty cool project. So let us switch to slide number one. What I'm gonna do is give you guys a very quick overview of two utility plans the city already has. One is called a water system plan, one's called a sewer system plan. And the next two slides that you see, uh, this first slide is on your water system plan, and it identifies where your existing water infrastructure is. And as you can see, uh, that, that red box is generally the south side of IED two. So not much water of any type of utility exists on the south side of IED two or in the mid veil corridor. Couple of years ago, we had hoped that, um, Estria Hospital would move on the south side of IED two, which would create almost a little over a mile of pipeline. And you can see in the, uh, green line, it's dedicated by permit B nineteen. That is a water main loop that goes down Alexander Road and Crosshundred IED two to loop back into the thinking system on the north side of IED two. So providing you with fire flow, water service availability for properties that currently don't exist. The project that we're gonna be talking about, and, uh, I'll get this new map up here in a minute, is gonna construct a portion of that B nineteen, which will identify any water supply. On sewer. So this map is your sewer system plan. That's your water system, uh, the green lines on there are all existing sanitary sewers and, whether it's horse mane or gravity. As you can see, there's really nothing on the south side of IED two except in the mid veil corridor. So the two maps you have in front of you. On the left hand side, uh, you see some yellow highlighting. That yellow highlighting represents the city limit lines, or is all the property in yellow is currently. The red box that you see, um, just north there, is where Project Kane is proposing to go. They're currently going to be outside city limits, so there's plans in place to annex that property into city limit line. So it will be a, uh, City of Sunniteside zone. And on the right hand side, the dark outline, um, you see the national roads, numbers. So this one was taken from the Port of Sunniteside feasibility. Port of Sunniteside, um, this is actually their plan for a mid veil industrial park. The property that Project Kane is looking to move into will be part of the Port of Sunniteside building park.
Just a second, I can interrupt you for a second, just for the record, Councilor Hart has arrived at our meeting. I keep a continuous.
Why do you play here?
That's gonna be right now, or you scream. Cause you're even a chipmunk. He's just a chair.
Tree, all kinds of problems. Anybody see that now?
Sorry, are you rushing?
No, it's fine, that's the way, and.
Perfect timing, you're right now.
Okay.
We're just talking about Project Kane, and, uh, we actually discussed the most important slide of the presentation. So the yellow box that you see that's highlighted, again, that's the approximate location of the development. From the previous slide, we know there's no sewer, no water, and actually no industrial sewer within the project limit. And so what this slide is doing is showing you approximate utility routing to get to Project Kane. Let me give you a few facts about the project. Um, it is a blue processor. It's planning to create two hundred jobs with continued expansion. Uh, it'll have about seventy-five trucks a day. They are an organization that is relocating out of their current state to come to Washington state. Uh, it's, it's a very significant, um, I have to be careful what I say, it was all signed on a disclosure agreement. But it's, so it's a very significant project for our area, uh, and it would, uh, generate actually quite a lot of revenue as well as jobs. It's important for us to try to find a way to serve them, to keep them in our area. So we were talking about your existing water. Uh, what you see is a blue line on Alexander, that's its potential water main. And that would measure about fifteen hundred feet. Uh, but it would extend the existing watering infrastructure to be able to serve up to Sunset Mountain Road, so both north and south. Uh, that's pretty crucial, we don't currently have that. And then your sewer and industrial sewer, uh, it'd be your, uh, green line and then the genta line, you can see that over on the screen. Those two utilities, uh, need to come from the south, uh, based on some site elevations on that site. Trying to get as much gravity sewer serving the site as we can, which then opens up all the properties around it to hopefully serve by gravity. So with the improvements that you see on screen, we'd be looking to add about seven thousand six hundred feet of industrial sewer and about eight thousand feet of sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer would be owned and operated by the City of Sunniteside. Industrial sewer would be owned and operated by the Port of Sunniteside. Questions coming up?
Councilor, any questions?
Next question? So generally, this is the slide that everybody is gonna care about, this is how much it's gonna cost. And especially how we're gonna pay for it. But as of this day, we're projecting a cost for utility infrastructure to serve the Project Kane site to be about five point six million dollars. So that would be for a total of water, for industrial sewer, sanitary sewer, and for some potential roadway improvement. So what you see below you, funding sources. We're gonna read these off, and then Joe will probably come up here and talk a little bit about what the county could potentially do. We have Yakima County Feed Program, is represented by YCPA. Have, uh, the City of Sunniteside, Port of Sunniteside, and Yakima County ARPA. And we want to share this with you today and use you the background information, because if a letter of intent is provided by Project Kane to the Port of Sunniteside to build that property, we'll be back here in May to ask council to execute, um, provide authorization to the city manager to submit a feed application, also a Yakima County ARPA application, in support of these infrastructure improvements. So what we're looking at overall, we'll start at the bottom one, Yakima County ARPA fund. Assuming without money has been here to talk to you, council, about ARPA. So we have also met with all three commissioners of different kinds, project, all the commissioners are in support of one million dollars. We still need to submit the formal application and the formal process for, for that. But the project's funding overall, we're anticipating one million dollars to Yakima County ARPA. Port of Sunniteside has committed to this project one point nine million dollars. So we'll get to see, but, uh, the Port of Sunniteside will be providing the match requirements for the feed application. And they're also going to be providing one point five million dollars for project for offsite infrastructure of cash. Next up, we have City of Sunniteside. We'd be looking for the City of Sunniteside to, uh, and again, no action is needed at this meeting, but we're looking for the city to use approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars of TBD to be for roadway improvement for Alexander Sunset Basin, all offsite of the economic developer. So let them figure it out away. Also be looking for the city to further water main, uh, that we were talking about, fifteen hundred feet of total of water main in Alexander for about seven hundred thousand dollars. So the city overall commitment would be around nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for the five point six million dollar project. Then Yakima County could be committing an application to YCPA, their maximum amount of the project. And that's currently at two point four million dollars. All of that funding combined, it's down to five point eight million dollars of funding available for the project, which kind of costs at five point six million. We're currently maybe at ten percent level, uh, understanding the cost of the project, so that's two hundred thousand dollar difference. We can consider it contingency, we can consider it that much less that, you know, would be asked for from the funding programs, or through the city, or through the court. So just keep that in, in, in mind. We don't expect the cost to overly escalate, but it's, it's good to actually have that, that level of comfort there. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Joe, he's gonna talk to you a little bit more about the YCPA program.
Hello, Council, Joe Schreit with Yakima County Development Association, I'm the manager, and this is one of our recruitment projects we've been working on. It is significant, and as you definitely touched on, it's about a full fifty million dollar capex. These are, these numbers, in favor of long-term tax revenues and the employees, and the two employees, they definitely offset sort of initial stock value, but it is significant. These type of, basically, also interesting is the fact that all of these funding partners are coming together to make this regional, a significant region, to make this project happen. And we want to be able to go to Project Kane, if they do get to the partner to say, hey, we definitely picking you guys to work in Sunny Side. Say we connected across RT's out of desperately. That's where we come from, to come to council and make sure that everyone's got a head up, head up, all of them done, moved, where all these funding sources are coming. I don't know, Stephanie, did you enter, self-potentialness? Because this, we call it regional significance, because even though it's right in their backyard, it's where the Port of Sunny Side is. Also affects all of Yakima County. And it'll open up additional acreage with this set of infrastructure economics. A few real catalysts. You guys don't budge for me. You will see other things follow. For the real win, to have that great true. Maybe what I should talk about is the CE program a little bit. I know some are from others, some in function they were, on how council goes. The CE program basically is called the Supporting Investments in Economic Development. This is how we got that. The program is built up in nineteen ninety-seven state legislation at the state level, designed to help remedy distressed rural areas, Yakima County. So the group economy, basically on population and median wage. It returns basically point zero nine percent of sales tax collected. To be administered through programs of the county's choosing to support local economic development projects. Mainly, the only thing it's really going to be useful is public infrastructure. In a project like this, that private investment coming in, public infrastructure creates that partnership to apply that. As Stephanie pointed out, it's two million dollar one. Traditionally, it's a fifty percent grant, fifty percent loan program. And it works. It's had a huge impact. I was going to go through a few here real quick. You're probably familiar with the Port of Sunny properties here, Crop Recks Services in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and sixteen, a location where Briar was, a building that's publicly owned. The Waterworks Building rehab, where COVID line is, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, some wastewater expansion improvements at the West Line. All these have helped. We get some of these projects, you have like most of the mushrooms, et cetera. As you know, but that's a lot of, represents a couple million dollars just there. But since nineteen ninety-nine, countywide, the CE program has invested over sixty million in a hundred and fifty different local. And that's always roads, water, and soup. Profitable county companies supported by CE, they invested over four hundred, four hundred and fifteen million of their own private investment in new facilities and created over twenty-eight hundred new jobs. That's since nineteen ninety-nine. They're taking one project that. Is the City of Sunny Side, and it's about two hundred jobs. I mean, that's already. I think that project is compared. It's right now capped at two million dollars per project, as it mentioned, is traditionally rewarded at fifty percent grant and fifty percent loan as per the CE policy. It does require a twenty percent maximum where the two million four hundred comes in from this project. We didn't know more of these details. I don't want to get too bogged down, but feel free to ask. We administer the program, YCPDA, and the CE board, which is each quarterly, reviews any better applications than they make the recommendation applied to the county. We've never had one come through that the commissioner said, no, we're not going to do this. I mean, that's pretty hardcore. We want to make sure this stuff works. There's all the science of. Because of the amount asked, typically, we look at about, you don't want to spend any more than about thirty thousand dollars to CE funding. That's kind of the little threshold that we like. And this project, Project Kane, if you're looking at, actually, I only did it for a hundred and seventy-five jobs, which is one, two, three, four, five. Looking at about eleven thousand CE funding for jobs at the two million. But it has, just telling you the advantage, it has all the key points that the CE board is going to look at. And it's never made any guarantees, but I can tell you it's a pretty good rate. Definitely CE, we fly for CE. The other really cool thing about this is most of this money is granted ARPA funding, some of the stuff is. Or putting in all money, a lot of people are coming up for the. There's always other options to pursue, other funding options, but we'd rather stay with this and see how much we can get as far as. Rather than CE taking on debt if they go to curb, the skirts only twenty-five percent. If you said, oh, I want all the three million dollars in curb with something like. Obviously, so we're really trying to make this work, really, really successful. I feel pretty confident I'll let count chickens, but I mean, this is going to be a great win for the entire county that worked really hard on this. If anyone has any questions, we want to make this happen. Before we ask for, maybe, answer the call when they say we're going to. Questions about the CE program?
Councilor, any questions?
One.
Peter.
Is this going to involve any extra work on the freeway, on the off-ramps?
No, this project itself doesn't trigger that, but I don't, you guys should. Go to your respective workers. There's a, I don't like Stephanie to go, but good question.
Probably another state question. But as you guys would all know, and what we talked about a little bit apart from Project Kane, but the exit sixty-nine off-ramp, unraveled off-ramp, stormstop, ARPA. Has been identified by Washita for some time, has interchange that's operating less than their allowable efficiency level. And so what the state has been doing is every project that comes into City of Sunny Side or is proposing to, that's required to do a traffic impact analysis. It has been commenting each one of those traffic impact analysis to assess some level of these. The most recent project that is coming through and actually up for state commission offices. It was called Lincoln Flat, which is approximately six hundred, potentially six hundred apartment units. Owned by, we'll be going in next to Walmart and. And that particular project did trigger an improvement to be a south belt on the Port of Sunny Side side interchange to do a. That developer is also a client of ours. We're working with them to also do a separate FEED application for roundabout exit. That will be a separate discussion coming to Council. But expect to hopefully see that within the next. And so by putting in those roundabouts and using the support of a FEED to do it. It will alleviate future developments by Project Kane from having to work out that DOT. So on the exit sixty-nine, what we're consistently proposed to do is come back to Council and ask, talk to you more about that project and what the design entails. Ask for approval during a regular company meeting for the city manager to commit an application, FEED application to YCPDA for support. That project would also be going in for the max amount of two point four million. And that would be to cover both roundabouts and not just the one required by Port.
Are there questions, Council?
Uh, just to follow up on that, when you mentioned two hundred and fifty thousand for the improvement on the road. That just doesn't seem hardly enough to put a parking spot along the road. So is this two hundred and fifty, is that matching money? Is that money, we're going to have to match to two fifty?
No, you shouldn't have to. The two hundred and fifty thousand, and what we don't know yet from Project Kane, is they're in dress and be rest. Seven side plans for them on site to have an high frequency potentially off of Highway two forty-one. And what the basis of the two hundred and fifty thousand is, is comments that we had received when Astria was coming in several years ago, back in twenty seventeen. Had received a comment from Washita. They had wanted an XL DXL lane coming off Highway two forty-one to access the hospital. So what we're planning on for this development, Project Kane is located right at the corner of Alexander, two forty-one. And they're going to have a driveway that comes off there. We're expecting the state to require a center term length. So there's already quite a lot of pavement out there. All that we're going to be doing is adding a little bit more shoulder onto the roadway and then. So not a full road.
Because I think the traffic that you mentioned, or that you did mention, that the hospital was going to generate. When you start talking amount of trucks that you mentioned, that's a tremendous overload on that, on that road. And I'm very concerned on the project. It seems like we underestimate. And then we pay the price on the other end. You know, with the Catholic charity housing going in, I mean, that's already going to overload that road. I, I'm concerned. I'll just, you know, and I'm going to have to see further substantial planning in order to make that happen.
Oh, I think there's been some balance. Know that Highway two forty-one, they choose to access up to forty-one, this under Washita jurisdiction. So what the development would do is they would have to create a traffic impact analysis. That TIO would have to be reviewed by the state for.
So, so.
Lynn, sir.
So, so in. Thank you.
I don't think that will work.
Is it on?
No, it's off.
Okay.
Does it come on?
Thank you. So my sure, my sure, I see it's many, I guess, so, well, okay, that's okay. The Department of Transportation, then, is the ones who will be making the impact, and all of those factors would be taken into consideration, I'm unsure. So if there wasn't a strain, you know, pass on that to the road. All of those things would be, it's already pretty, pretty busy. For various reasons, with the animals doing on trucks and so forth, coming down on the direction. It seems like if you had, did you say earlier, I knew it's a very difficult way, that how many trucks would be going through there?
Yes, well, there'll be.
Just from the Kane project?
There'll be two hundred employees, employees will be over a shift. So, so there will be an operation twenty-four hours. An actual freight truck, linking at seventy-five freight trucks. And the.
Day or?
A day, so over a twenty-four hour period. So the concern is Highway two forty-one, and likewise on Alexander, people don't necessarily go to the limit. There's a lot of fast-moving traffic out there. And what we don't want to see happen is these trucks, these employees, you know, going down on the roadway, that creating an issue for other drivers. Or even having issues trying to get back out, making a left or a right. So that's where the level of improvement is.
Other questions, Council?
Yeah, I have a couple as well. You know, I share my colleagues' concern about traffic. And, you know, if you want to know what it's like with seventy-five trucks taking one down, there's way to harvest. And there will be at least seventy-five trucks taking one down in that area. It does get crowded and uncomfortable in that, in that section of town. And we're not talking just about the section of Alexander Road that is Highway two forty-one or two forty-one South and Madison. We're also talking about Alexander Road there by Dairy Gold and that whole section. And I think we need to think along those lines on the intersection Midvale Road to, what is it, to the right, Emerald Road or Alexander Road. You need to think about that intersection. It's already a bit tricky if you're trying to come off of Emerald Road and turn north onto Midvale. So we have to think about improvement, not only at the intersection right there, but intersections that are affected on either side. Dairy Gold's got quite a large number of employees, LTI's had a number of employees, so there's a fair lot of traffic there. The new proposed apartment complexes, and those being built already, that's going to have an impact that already has been said. So I think we need to think in terms of traffic and that impact, in a bit larger of a picture than, than just this project. And especially if we have ideas that we're going to expand in the south of this, and that's going to open it up once we've got infrastructure in there, and it certainly should. That's, that's been our dream for a long time. So we need to find our roads working. And so it might be bigger road improvements than we're talking about right now, if we need to look at. The other thing is, you know, historically, we have put in the absolute minimum necessary to do the development. And I think we think ahead on that, so that we don't automatically have to dig up all of our lines the next time another industry wants to come in. I know it's early, and there's no letter of intent or that sort of thing in your hands, but what, at this point, what are the odds? I mean, what's the percentage of them coming in? Are we looking at eighty percent chance of them coming in, or fifty percent chance, or where are we at on that?
Better than ninety?
Better than ninety.
This has been a sports side visit. Our staff, we were in competition with sites out of Oregon and Iowa and a couple others in Washington. And we all now, we're this first site of what they call. The word they use. We're like a site, the preferred site. First, we thought that meant like compared to what, but we were the pick at the time. I think they've crossed this elimination now of the other sites that look at us. The last one was where a lot higher level governance of the organization was at, was that the site. I, I always hate to count chickens, but I really did think it's a very strong, very strong likelihood that. All these other steps go. There's a lot of continuously uncertain arrangements, wanting to letter the intent. I really felt pretty, pretty good that Port of Sunny Side.
Okay, and then so, we had everything lined up, ready to go for this. And let's say a false fart, which we opened up, let's say that, are we on the hook or anything at this, at that point? While we got it kind of lined up, it's not going to happen, so.
No. And right now, it's just a matter of us creating the fact that, hey, if you guys, it's kind of a little dog or cat and mouse game, where of course, everyone wants to make sure they have all the lines crossed. Which is understandable. They don't want to invest fifty million dollars in something that's going to work. Actually, I'd more protect the city and the Port's interest and account. Okay, well, you guys are going to really come here and here's what we say we can do. Once, and it's going to be that continuous little dance until people see it. And this is what we're putting on the table, is if we can commit, if all our people group together in all our different organizations, or municipal. Level, county level, and say, this is how we see this happening, and all this funding will be in place. And we'll go to our council, because they, we talked to them already in this, I mean, guys want to come here, we'll make that happen.
Would like to say something, anybody's name. Thank you. The one thing that I would like to make sure Council knows, I think that even if this project pulled out, we should do this, we should fund this improvement. This is one thing that we didn't do with the Hudson property. We did not plan accordingly to get infrastructure there, that's why we haven't gotten our industry in that area. And we haven't sold that property. So I think if Project Kane pulls out, we should still move forward with this, especially since we finally have Yakima County, the Port of Sunny Side, and the City of Sunny Side agreeing towards funding. Those, and they will come. That's, you know, look at all the acreage we're opening up. And I think that it's just a smart move to plan for our future, even if Project Kane doesn't come through.
You know, a lot of the funding programs are vested in kind of like a bourbon can tradition. And you know, I think, take that with a caveat, because there's wiggle room on this, and I agree with you saying, there's nothing. I know Jay Hester feels the same way about it. So, and coming from economic development, you don't have a set brand to go, you're going to be worked on. I mean, that's just the way it is today, to be competitive. And that's why it's so great that the Port District, same with Brandy, you have this in the backyard, because there's so great to work. Everything's ready to go, and they get economic development, highly competitive on, on, as a property, and they just have everything in place to be truly shovel-ready and certified like that. Still see more wins. I mean, there's just no question about it. Now, ARPA funds available, which are grants, right, if there's other ways to do things. And I would agree with Elizabeth, the time they hit that noise now. But I feel pretty good about this site. I don't want to mislead anybody, but there's. Moment, I don't want to mislead anybody, but I feel pretty good about it. And I think this is really a great way to put a step forward. And I agree that roads are rough out there. But this is, these are little catalysts that keep moving and make things better, or you know, you know, spots. Here, perfect place, right here.
Yeah, I have one more question. The TBD fund is what we want to talk about doing on road improvements. How's that going to impact other projects that we wouldn't typically use that money for, as street improvements and that sort of stuff? Because we have street improvements that need to be done here in Sunny Side, and I don't want to miss out on doing those tubes.
We're in good shape with TBD, we're centered around, we're quite generalizing, I think, with the TBD fund. So we do have projects slated just to start the money on, but we're definitely in good shape. We're all bringing it up, especially expecting seventy thousand. There are projects that we did have slated when we created TBD, which we all kind of prioritize as a group. And what we want to do, those projects are still, they're not going anywhere.
And for the record, I'm in favor of this, and building it out, having it ready to go. I think we need to think long-term, and I think having it built out and ready to go, so if somebody buys a property, we better TBD right there already, so let's go. Will definitely be a draw, or something like, because I don't disagree with that, but these questions do have to be asked.
And being on your, the TBD mine, for approximately one hundred fifty thousand dollars. It wasn't necessarily, that's not necessarily an improvement, we need to go in right away, right this day and now. Do you want the development to come in, when they commit, commit drawing, the city to review, and we can have a much better understanding from state and traffic impact, what's really going to be the car with this development. And the traffic impact analysis would be looking at. And the traffic impact analysis would be looking at not only this location, it was, the state doesn't require us with both Exit 67 and 69 and Emerald and I O 241, all the major intersections. So, uh, the, the T V D, we wanted to bring it up too, so we knew about it, but it's not necessarily even seen as. And, uh, a little bit more, uh, significance would be the potential ARPA funding, city ARPA funding of around $100,000 to expand. That will have, like, a little bit of, like, much more, you know, profound, um, economic development for you. I mean, whether it's this project, and all, the court has actually had a few votes that turned away from North Command. That would just continue to expand the plan that you already had in your position. And I'm going to have, um, Jackie, if you don't mind, um, if you can push back to, won't take too much more time, but. I just, um, make sure five that have two, that's my line, one in yellow, let me tell you about the fourth side back. So, uh, this plan really did come from the court's, um, development plan. And the one on the right hand side, and it's a little small, uh, but you can see that they've actually have a plan partially out, um, they're approximately 500 acres plus. Of property, that's all economic development. So there are some options in there for internal roads, um, and likewise, a utility of structure throughout that entire 500 acre development. You can see there's a couple accesses there on to Highway 241, there's two going south on to Duffy, and there's, uh, another access coming out of the middle. So that entire area when it develops, the idea really is to try to, um, position traffic so that there's going to be alternate routes, you know, to access on to the major. We do not disagree that the intersection at Midville, um, is preserving. Uh, my understanding on that is the signal on there can be reprogrammed to actually allow more of a state, um, turning movement structure. And so that actually should help, you know, try to move there. This is flashing yellow, which you actually said that's it. True dedicated, uh, true way. Okay, now let me switch you over to the last slide. So this is the proposed schedule, six months. So here we are today, we're talking to you, trying to give you as much information as we can on this incoming development. Um, with the thought that we will be back at regular council meetings. Uh, and what we have here is our best idea in. Been there for the letter of intent to the court. So our discussion today is all caveated on having that letter of intent from Project Ane to the. That triggers everything that we're talking about today. Now, the last schedule I had that we had talked about, uh, was the first and second week of May. We're going to know fairly soon if this develops. If we do, what that does is we propose to come back on May 23rd, uh, to present a seed application. After the council authorized, city managers sign that application. The application was signed, they get submitted to Joe, the West D A. Uh, they, they review it, and, uh, we are, Shane and myself, and the developer will be, uh, doing a presentation. For official approval of that 24 million. So the, the next major item on there is June 13th. And June 13th, we would again come back to council, ask council's permission to authorize city managers to submit an ARPA application. To be the Yakima County ARPA program. And the ARPA applications are due June 24th. And why we've stated this way that, um, county commissioners are going to wait and view applications that have additional funding sources. We want to show the Yakima County Commissioners that we have Port of Sunnyside involved, and that we receive the funding. So that will make that Yakima County ARPA application that much. And Yakima County, they review the application, uh, it takes 90 days for them to review it, and another 90 days to get the funding out. They're, they're not exactly succeeding, so. But what we would like to see, uh, this developer, again, they move forward, they're going to be moving very fast, and they actually want to come here very quickly. So by the spring of 2024, they want to be in operation. Could mean that, um, we will be constructing utilities in our area, at least during the winter, and we are supposed to do it this winter. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
I'm just thinking, it's very, very exciting.
So it's exciting for us to, um, Joe and myself met with, uh, the, the developer October of last year. So they have been interested in this area in Washington State for over six months.
My head, it was earlier that year when they actually. Had the funds, so we've got a lot going back and forth. All right, it's so fun to be here because this is the moment of truth where it's like, we get to tell you we got a big fish all the while, we're just making sure. The analogy is, it's so fun to just be here.
Any questions and comments, Council? On our Zoom meeting, we have Mr. Sutti, and we gave him an opportunity to speak as well.
No questions or comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, so further comments on this item? Anything else that you need to bring up on this?
Um, no, I think you guys have gotten to the highest level we can on that.
Well, I want to thank you for your brief stage, Joe, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for having me. If you have any questions, I'll.
Will do. Very good, well, this is something that we were going to, we're going to need to turn around in our minds a little bit, and I know we've all heard something about it. And, um, and there are non-disloyal agreements in place, so we can't hear all the details at this time. But, um, this has got some potential, and I, and I encourage Council to think about it, turn these things around, and we don't have to, uh, make a decision tonight or, or vote on anything, there's no action here. Um, but this is a lot of information, and it's good information, and as Council Hart said, it's exciting. Um, we, we like to see roads, they spend part of our plan to, uh, provide different job opportunities for people and to, uh. You know, and to see the sunset grow in a positive way, so we continue working towards that. If this all works out, that's, uh, that's a great deal for the city, so. Our next item of business, I have a reclassification of Recreation Coordinator, and I'm City Manager.
And I will turn this over to Ms. Jameson Horn.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Um, I am here to request reclassification of our public, or, sorry, our Parkson Recreation Coordinator. Um, I have attached to you and your council packet, the current job description for Recreation Coordinator. And the proposed, uh, description for Parkson Recreation Supervisor. And I did highlight in both of them, job applications, some areas that indicate that the job already does, but that's the new one, is you go to the next page, or to the next. We have that one. There are a couple areas highlighted, um, the current job description already does require supervision of staff. Um, I still live the job in not well classified to be able to, to do that work. In addition, um, I think that bringing back Recreation has been a huge success for us. And that Gwen has been phenomenal at getting programs going. And this change would allow us to change her over to be an exempt, um, FLSA exempt employee. So that she would have more flexibility in the hours that she works in order to provide the programming. Um, there's certain times of the year, like the winter, where there's not going to be anything going on, but as full season approaches, the, the girl could be putting in, you know, 12 hours of work a day. And so calculating and coming up with all of that overtime could be, it's more difficult to budget for. Um, and then, like I said, based on the responsibility level, I believe she has a better fit as a supervisor role. Um, the financial impact of this would be about $20,000 difference for 2022. So again, I'm asking for increased money and staffing, but I do think that this is a very good cause, and I think the council has been the higher support of Recreation. And I think hopefully everybody's been able to do the great work that, um, Gwen has been able to provide. And so I think this would give her more flexibility to provide that, that service, work and develop her program.
Council questions, comments?
Um, I, I'm really happy with the direction of, of, uh, our Parks and Recreation Department. Um, and I know in the past, we did have, I think, a Parks Rec Director, so we're bringing back that position. And as I read through what we got, we're also maybe looking at buying somebody for, for hiring somebody for her to supervise. My concern here is sometimes we get too many administrators and not, and not enough workers. And, and, and this bothers me a little bit right now, with, with this. I, I have no problem if, if it would have expanded the, the duties and the expectations of, of this particular position. Uh, I think she needs to be paid for, but I, I am a little concerned with what we're going to do after that.
And if I could address that concern, what I, what I truly believe is that she's already doing, that this reclassification is actually doing some paper. Because the duties that she is already performing are encompassed in the Parkson Recreation Supervisor job description. And unfortunately, she is not getting paid adequately for the work that she's providing. And, um, I also brought James Cole with me here today, who has a long history of working in Parkson Recreation. And he's been mentoring her since she started here. And I brought him because I didn't want to be the person to attest to a casual job she's done, but I thought I'd bring an expert. Um, and he can, he can comment on the level of work that she is doing and the requirements and whether or not, um, that's a good fit. So I don't know if you'd like to hear from him.
Sir, if you'd like to comment, we certainly have to go on.
Let me just make this comment about Gwen. Gwen leader is a, is, is a diamond in the rough. I have 20 years of experience as a Parkson Recreation Director. You're utilizing her as a Parkson Recreation Director, but you're paying her as a, a coordinator. And my professional opinion is that if you don't do something about that, you're going to lose a good, a good employee. That, that has already proven to me that, that she is willing to go the extra mile to make sure that the job is done, and to make sure that it's done correctly.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Council, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I'm having work with Gwen on a couple of different projects, um, since she's been hired here, and voluntary and capaciting, uh, and working with some others to. Work with her voluntarily, she has been just amazing, easy to work with, um, her go get them, she, nothing phases her. I mean, one day we were trying to put up, uh, because sometime we're putting up a, a large, uh, one of the bouquets, and it just, we thought we were going to put down, and we're. Quite a work out, but she had everybody working on it, and trying to come up with a solution, until we found a different way. And she thinks that's like off, she's, she's tuition oriented, and she's not afraid to go on the right grant. For the different projects that she's doing, I've seen that already, uh, two or three different programs that she's done. She's bought any money to support the program, programs at, at the pub. So I am in favor of, of, uh, making her, I was supervising her, giving her just compensation because. In, in just a short time, in September, which she's been here, in, 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 in September, it's just been amazing, the number of people who've come forward to work and volunteers with her. The number of programs that she's put on, and when she has time for the summer. So, um, I don't think we're, we're, we're not moving money on this woman, or we're like that, we're not moving money on her. And I am, I agree with, uh, Cole here, that if we don't recognize her potential and her, what she's already shown, that we're not like, we could, we just didn't have the training. And I, I really think we are here, she's got the right job.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sutti.
Thank you, sir. So I, I understand where, what we're trying to do here, but I, I, I hope Council is mindful of the fact that. A family of four in this community makes $48,000 a year. That's the median income for a family of four in this community. Um, we need to be mindful of that. Um, when I look on the Association of Washington City Salary site, I see that a, a Parkson Recreation Director makes between $53,000 and $82,000 a year. Um, we're proposing to pay $97,300 a year for our Parks and Rec Director. Um, but we're going to call it a supervisor, i- is that what we're doing? I, I just want to make sure here.
Yeah, let me, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Sutti, let me answer that question for you. The $97,000 includes salary and benefits. Um, so the actual salary that is associated with that is not nearly, um, that much. As you can see, the $77,000 that was there, that included her benefits as well as salary, so she's not getting to take that. Um, and I, I do, I would not approach the council at this time with a director level position. Um, because I think our recreation program is still to be rising upstate, we're not there yet, um, to meet somebody with, with. To, to bring in that salary level, so I agree with your, your message, D G. Um, and I think Gwen is an excellent candidate to grow into that someday, but at this point, um, I think she's a really good fit for a supervisor level job. And I believe that the salary, um, on them was approximately 66, and I wish that I had driven that down. So that I had it in writing, but I don't look in project.
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate the comments. Look, if she's supervising someone, she should be a supervisor. There's no, I, I have no problems with that whatsoever. I just want Council to be mindful of the fact that there was a time when we had other directors, as, as Mr. Farmer mentioned. Um, and we agreed, Council, at that time, um, that we didn't need those directors' positions, and we're now adding both of them back in, so I want to be mindful of that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, sir. I saw Anne coming up as well, on the line. All right, so, yeah, my comments are, are similar. I think that, um, as a Parks and Rec, um, what's her title now, Parks and Rec? Core Coordinator, she has done a, a very good job. I haven't had the opportunity to live, uh, actually work with her on many of the projects, but, uh, conversations I've had with her, her enthusiasm and creativity has impressed me. Uh, I think that she does have potential to have a good future with the city of Sunnyside. I'd like to see her, you know, serving for 20 years, uh, I think that would be a wonderful thing to have. We've had, we've gone through a number of, uh, Parks and Rec coordinators and, and other folks involved in programs over the last few years. And, uh, it's been a little discouraging that we can't keep people for a longer period of time. Um, I do have a little concern with bringing back, you know, directors and whatnot, these are titles that Council had agreed on in the past, that isn't something that we want to do. But at the same time, you versus who is supervising others? And because of the strange hours that she will sometimes be called to work, especially over the course of the summer with, uh, not only the pool, but other programs that are going on, she might be called in at strange hours to fix something or take care of an issue. Um, that we need to think about that as well, so. I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to the idea, I'm not opposed to the changing of the, the classification, because I think that's an important thing for us to recognize as well.
Mr. Mayor, I, if I could just add one more thing, and that is, um, I, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that's been said by Council tonight, a- as, as well as, um, the person that we have in the position. But as council members, that's not our job to look at that. We don't want to look at the individual, uh, and their merits or anything of that nature, because that's not our job. Our job is to build the machine so the manager can run it. So if she needs a director's position, then she asks for one, and we give her one, if that's what we choose to do. But I just want Council to be aware of that, we have to take ourselves out of the role of looking at the individual and her merits, because I'm sure she's doing a great job. But that's not how we fund city positions in the city.
And actually, that was the point I was just going to make, that as much as we love Gwen, and the fact that she does such a good job. Um, in my experience, um, almost eight years working here, I've had, um, three different Recreation Coordinators. And each one of them has told me that it's a job that requires a bachelor's degree. me that it's a job that requires a bachelor's degree for a coordinator position. And they are so underpaid that they use this as a way to find another place that will take them where they get paid the wage of a director. And so in my experience, working with the people and talking with the people that have left, it always came down to the fact that they would be at Parks and Recreation meetings and people would say, you're a coordinator, why are you here? The directors are supposed to be here. Oh, I'm the only staff. And so that's what we really want to focus on, is this position, for at least eight years, has been doing the work and the job of a director, and that's what is called in every other city in the valley as a coordinator. So I, and I do want to say, I'm not trying to say Gwen isn't doing a great job. She, you don't see a work product we see. Before she does a program, she brings you a manual that says, this is how I'm going to do this job. And then it's so well done, you exactly know who she's asked to volunteer, who she's had done a lot of, because she has a degree in recreation. But that's also, and I was just going to say, I was hired on as a financial analyst and I had a master's degree. And they paid me sixty thousand dollars a year, and I really should have been a finance director. And we had to do this because the direction of council has been no directors, but I really did the job of a finance director. So sometimes we have to look at, does the title match the work? And in this case, clearly, it is a recreation supervisor. So I just want you guys to know, I don't know if title is what's getting us hung up sometimes, but it is very strange when you come to work for a city and you don't have director level things. That's just the structure of cities. And, you know, like Ms. Sutiya said, we want to make sure to not take Gwen as the only one. We've had other issues and it's always come down to, you know, I have a bachelor's degree.
Would you mind if I say one other thing?
Go ahead.
One of the reasons that I asked Mr. Cole to be here was because in my position as the person who handles the budget and is in charge of HR and does a lot of work with position development, I did not want to be the person here saying how wonderful Gwen is, because I am completely in agreement with Ms. Sutiya, that the position should be designed based on what the actual city is trying to accomplish and the needs of the city. And so if we took Gwen out of the equation, I still believe that the job that we're asking for somebody to do is more closely related to a supervisor job. And at this time, we are not necessarily requesting director level work out of the individual, we're not requesting budget development, we're not requesting, you know, hiring and firing decisions that she works with the city manager on. She's not doing any procurement without approval, but she is, and any person who is doing this would be required to supervise the full staff, to supervise the recreation assistance and the camp that we're having, the summer camp, there's going to be, I think, I want to say, fourteen staff people?
Yeah.
Something like that, that will be coming in to supervise that camp. And if she doesn't get this, if she's not the person who is supervising them, then that falls to me. And I am very busy, and I would much prefer to have her take care of this.
Alert.
I just have one last question. Where exactly did the ninety-seven three come from?
That is based on the estimated salary benefits for the rest of the year, the difference in salary. I actually think I did it within the full year. So the amount that we budgeted originally for the recreation coordinator is the seventy-seven three hundred, so this increases that budget amount for salary benefits.
Right, but where did the exact twenty thousand come from?
Oh, I apologize. Well, that's the difference between the two, but the salary level is matching in the supervisor union. It is the, we're just adding, we would be adding a job title to the, supervise the streets and maintenance supervisor line item. So the salary level in that fell closely within my research for a range for this position that actually encompassed that pretty well. So instead of creating a new salary line item, we can just add another position to that same classification level for pay.
And how many employees is the other position covering?
Mr. Fisher, do you mind if I turn that over?
Five. Thank you.
And so for this position, it would be one person being supervised year-round, but it would be, you know, twenty plus during the summer months, and depending on the recreational.
I'll hang up.
Other questions? Here we go. I asked for any action here on this item tonight, so once again, I think if this individual is supervising people, then she had ought to be a supervisor. I think that's true of all positions in the city, for all people. You should have that title. And so I'm not opposed to this in moving forward, so.
Sounds like there's enough interest, but I will try to bring it back to council at the next meeting.
Good, and thank you for that. Next time, this is an M C swim team contract and pool rate discussion. This came up at our last meeting where we had to struggle with our rate fee adjustments and bringing them all into one common place. And we had some pushback, not only from council members, but also from members of the swim team and swim team board. The risk being that the extra cost incurred of making all swimmers have a season pass in order to be on the swim team was going to inhibit some families from their older kids on swim team. It's forty dollars per student, and they're already paying ninety dollars per swimmer to enroll on the swim team, and an additional forty dollars. Well, for some families, sunny side pushover the top and maybe impossible. There are other communities now who have imposed that and gave really put their swim team at risk. I heard rumors of one that isn't even going to be able to team this year as a result of those types of things. And so we want to make sure that swim team isn't something that only those who have the available money can afford to do. And so we ask Miss Warner to do a little more work, and I'm optimistic that we've got something to mention there.
And with that, I'm going to turn it over, Miss Warner, because she has done all the work on it.
Very good, Miss Warner.
Thank you. I did poll the other swim teams that are members of the family to get the information on how would they charge participants and their contracts. And the majority of the other, the other swim teams do charge some sort of admission pass. The only one that really doesn't charge the participants much anything is our next door newer grandmothers. So they are, all their fees are charged through the, through their youth permit that they give to the swim team. And then additionally, Vila doesn't charge participants anything directly, but they pay the actual rental rate, they pay a much higher rate, and their swim team pays for that, and then they recoup the cost by charging their participants. Otherwise, everybody else that's charged some sort of season pass or just the regular, they, most of them have a negotiated season pass, like what we proposed, or they do charge just the regular season pass. I was thinking a lot about this, and I think that, I understand the want and the desire to support this program. I think it's important. I like that the council thinks it's important, I think that's right. My concern from a financial perspective is to make sure that it is done above the board, I guess. And so the actual cost for overhead should, and participation should be considered and included and tracked in one way or another. So I propose, I think at the last meeting, that maybe we do a scholarship fund, I still charge the fees, I do a scholarship fund, or I'm open to adding admissions charges to the contract in one way or another, but right now there is no language to cover it. And so what we're doing is basically allowing an asset organization to use this ability for a lot less money than, I think they had it for a good reason. I went back and checked how much the swim team has paid historically all the way back to twenty twelve. And like back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, they were paying us more than we're going to ask them to pay us now. So it is not like we're hiking the rates up. I'm not sure if they had any changes with the rates that they charged their students, but in reality, with inflation, you know, we're actually getting a lot less money now than we were even five years ago, so something to consider.
Well, there are a couple of factors. I know that those years, you know, late two thousands, early two thousand teens, it was kind of the peak point for sunny side swim teams. And I know this for a fact, because my kids were on the team, and we had up to one hundred and twenty swimmers at the time, and it was a, you know, it was a going venture, and our numbers have dropped considerably since then. I think the last time I saw numbers, we were in the eighties. So there's been a significant drop. I don't know right off the top of my head how the fees the team has charged has changed. I suppose I can go back into my check ledger and find out what I paid each year. But yeah, it's just something that the team as a body, the board, is very concerned about, because we want kids who don't have financial resources to be able to participate as well. And the team does go look for sponsorships. They sell banners, they sell different things. Rotary has supported them considerably over the years as well. But they're just concerned that this might just be the breaking point for some kids. So I don't know. I mean, you had mentioned something perhaps that it might be a grant possible or something like that. They have been selling, they've been asking for sponsorships. I know that different businesses have commented to me about that.
My comfort level from a financial perspective of having to talk to auditors about how we come up with these kinds of contracts would be either to work in to the current contract, something that specifically addresses that this covers the fees of admission and the overhead, because right now this contract only covers the hourly rate, not even the benefit rate that the staff would show up. So I would prefer that either we rewrite the contracts to include those things or add something additional to the participants directly. But at either point, either way, the council is within a priority to decide to sponsor the program. So you can, we can, we can approve an expenditure basically to go to the swim team or to offset the cost.
Yes. Does it stand as right now? How close are we to getting nailed for gifting a public funds?
With the current contract, I would have a hard time defending it if I had to run the budget this past time.
If I may just say something, given some suggestions are more transparent on how much we are actually, in a way, relating to swim team. And I wouldn't necessarily call it donating, but it is, in a way, it's a way of donating by not charging.
Which is, it's about eight thousand dollars. If you calculate the amount of money that we could be collecting if we were collecting admission fees or requiring a season pass and collecting the amount for overhead, essentially, it's, you know, depending on how you calculate it, which there's no way to calculate anything, but it is, you know, between eight and ten thousand dollars that the city is effectively basically writing off as an expense.
Nowadays, when you buy a season ticket, does that mean your whole family gets the season ticket?
So what we propose is to allow the swim team to get the other family pass, so they would either be on a family pass that gives up to ten, or up to six, and then you can pass additional up to ten. To go ahead and allow that or to purchase the discounted swim team pass yearly defined. And I think like cross, if the kids purchase the discounted swim team pass, they don't even get to use it unless except for swim team stuff, but I don't think we even want to put that restriction in, but just like all kind of other things you do. But then you also allow that to the family owner.
Do you have any idea how many kids, families already have season passes, or we're not funding everybody?
And I asked the swim team if they could provide any of that information, and they were not able to provide us anything directly. And so they did kind of tell me that there were maybe five or six families that would probably benefit more from getting the family pass by actually than from buying the individual swim team passes.
But I will say, as a parent, somebody experienced, if the panel's kids get out of the pool after practice and then after swim meet and that kind of stuff, they're not coming back to play in the pool.
And I would also point out that last year, we did not sell season passes due to COVID because we couldn't guarantee that the pool would be open a full season. So we don't have a clean background on last year's full season and full season before that, the pool was closed. So really, we're unsure of what the season pass activity will look like this year.
So, thank you. So what we're actually offering are two possibilities for families that are on the swim team. They could have the family pass, which is how much is that on?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars for the six people.
So a swim team pass is?
Forty dollars for each individual swimmer.
So it all will be better for the big pass.
Yeah, would.
Yeah. But it is an option.
Right, and I, I, I am in support of the council offering a scholarship. That is what I think. My perfect vision of this would be, would be amazing if we could offer, I think if we, eighty kids on the swim team pass would bring in about three thousand, two hundred dollars. So if the council would choose to offer to them two thousand dollars in scholarship funds, that'll cover, you know, sixty-five percent of the swimmers that may not be able to afford it. But it's. Oh, but it makes, it's more, it is more transparent and it makes more sense to do it that way. And then your families are applying instead of just giving them like it free pass, because they're, not all of the kids on the swim team, that they're receiving, they need free pass.
So in that scholarship fund, where would we find those?
The council would, would incorporate it out of the, out of the general money. Just like you do, well, I mean, I guess you do use L P A for the folks and stuff, but you can, you can give scholarship funds for recreation out of general money, property tax and field tax.
Yes, we do like a family slash organizational pass. So Derry Goles wanted to sponsor an organizational pass. They're going to do swim team or Ostroms wanted to have a, you know, we could do an organizational pass with our family pass.
That's an excellent idea. Or even someday if we wanted to do workplace and be able to offer the swim team a lower cost, or offer the families a lower cost, but increase the price of the swim team in lieu of charging families directly, we could offer like the swim team an organizational pass, but we just gave them to charge fifteen dollars a swim team for participants.
You count the swim team as an organization, just like it was Jerry Goles, Ostrom, anyone else.
And we could just build that into the contract, build that, you know?
Actually, that's not a bad idea.
I think for me, for this year, it's, for all states, it's late. You know, they haven't had a lot of time to mull this over and financially figure it out. I would certainly support a scholarship program. But then it's next year or even this year, start on some kind of a plan to where the individual passes are factored in to the cost of the swim team. These kids bring in a lot of money to the city. And we don't look at it that way also. I think we're doing.
I I think we're we're doing them a disservice. So they bring in lots of people into town and lots of money is spent. And and I think, and and we're we're at a time now where our kids are struggling and and we need to do everything we can to to help bolster them and make them want to do something that they can be proud of. And and so I I would I would support full scholarship programs, you're not just a part of a full scholarship program this year. And and then and then next year, maybe in in the in the planning, then we can factor in some of the costs of of the individual season tickets.
And I would be very eager to arrange um to to do like a line item, a new line item for the next budget event, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars base for the swim team scholarship um fund for economic or whatever. But you know, the signature I was actually talking about, you know, L-PAC is the one that gives the money to the the floats, for the floats and for the um, but how many people actually come in town or out of town for that? Versus how many people come into town or out of town for swim team? Especially if we have, happened to have championships that year. They're actually here, you know, all day, maybe spending money on our restaurants and stuff versus just coming to to see their kids in the parade for an hour and then leaving.
And this farmer makes a very good point. Um, the city of Seela has a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty kids on their swim. All those kids come with parents and siblings and those families are here for three to five hours a night, depending on how old their kids are, um, have been out there from six o'clock or have been working from six o'clock about eleven-thirty at night regularly. Um, those folks have to eat and ice cream trucks make a killing out there. And you know, yeah, the swim team has its little food trailer, but uh people go all over places to get food. And when there's championships, uh, yeah, there's a lot of money spent in town. We that every, we'd see every seven years. I'm not sure how many teams are there anymore. But um the the team would make enough money off of everything going on and to be able to help buy new equipment. So every seven years, you'd buy new equipment. Um, but yeah, they pay places, they they eat, they do all that. That's that is reasonable revenue for the course of the summer.
If I had to pitch my favorite plan for for doing this, it would be to add that even to authorize the season pass as the on the fee schedule and then to authorize the scholarship funds in full. And then in in lieu of doing the rates the way we do them here where we're being charged by staff hour, um, potentially looking at the compensation portion of this and offering something that's more like a negotiated rental rate. Um, because then it encompasses overheads for participants of looking and reading your contract.
Um, yeah, that sounds to me like a really probably a generous way to go about it. I think with um, some of his office said about organizations. Um, I know that that's one of the the issues. We have another partner, Recreation Program. If they're not part, if they're not big generated, then they're a different organization and they have to pay an organizational fee to use our city property. Um, so I think that that is something we might want to look into as well. Um, but yeah, I think the negotiated contract to use the pool is is supposed to, I did it too. Because we always, the pool was orange and red as opposed to that other nice color you like.
Yeah, one of the pools are always in a red and blue, but it's always good. But you know, there's a chance of all, you know, not not more pink. If you wanted to look at negotiating with the swim team like a discounted um pool rental fee, then I feel that they may feel a bit more control over the price every year too. Um, because if they're needing extra equipment, can they, I mean, I I I don't know if the team were, I don't know if they really need to practice every day. Could they skip, could they skip a day of practice for the first three weeks or something? And allow that, you know what I mean? That's not a reference that they're likely to run the pool back here. They need to spend somewhere else for the blocking in and basically, you know, the staff we provide, so.
Um, and if I recall it, um, this was changed in two thousand seventeen, I believe, to this staffing model that used to just be one flat fee per city, um, which was, they were thinking it was going to be less expensive for them as they just paid for the lifeguard and it turned out to be much more expensive. So we could go back to an older contract and look at something like that where it's just all of that flat fee. And 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 it was based on how many times they used the pool exclusively. Um, and and they are nonprofit, they're a registered nonprofit, they would get that nonprofit rate usually half of any regular.
Yeah, I think that I ran the numbers, was giving them to fifty percent. We have a fifty percent for nonprofit community organizations for other rentals, but it did not bring our rental fee too high. But that's this, bring the fee down enough really can make it feasible for the swim team, unfortunately. But the reason I would prefer to go on an hour by hour basis is because um if they pay a flat fee upfront and they, if we go by on an hour by hour basis, if for example, the swim team meet gets canceled, the city can still open and operate and not owe the swim team any money back, you know? They can just pay monthly based on how many hours they're using or whatnot. Um, and then if they don't show up, the city can then use them their own facilities.
And actually, how that works, Jameson, is if they don't show up, the staff isn't scheduled. So there's there's, it it doesn't have staffing. But yeah, it's a wash. So we've had right, we've had meets that, you know, were rained out or um, they didn't have enough swimmers, that kind of thing. And it it really, they they reserve those, like they actually contract those in advance. And so they know those are the dates and and the pool manager schedules those out, so. So the pool wouldn't be able to, we think there would be staffing. It it's, I learned a lot last year about the pool, how it's it, it really is. It's it's a lot of work that gets put in teenagers' hands at a very young age, so.
And it's been running like this for decades and it's just impressive that it keeps evolving fast.
So I guess I'm just looking for some direction on uh on what you would like means for both to the council back. So um, I don't know.
Council members, can I ask?
Well, we've got to do something pretty quick because it's almost upon us and we can change it next year. And we've had a lot of ideas till now today, so I'm at a loss myself.
I would say a full scholarship this year and and uh start on it early enough next year to where uh they, the 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 parents and and the swim team will be aware of what's going to be required. But on the other hand, I I don't want to make our rate to them so high that kids can't, you know, a family of four can't have four kids swim. Uh, I I I think it's a very delicate negotiation there. But I I for this year, I I would say full fellow, full scholarship and and uh let's move on to next year.
Okay, and so then the contract, so your opinion then is the contract that was in the packet, which there was one small adjustment after speaking with some members of the swim team. Um, this contract does specify that they still rent the pool out on their bye week. And it did check with them to see why they would rent it out when there was no need, if they still didn't practice or whatnot, and and they did say that they probably would need to get filled. Um, the the amount that was told to them before is actually a little bit less than what that said, but. So is that?
Factor that in?
Yeah.
So, is council in agreement with that? Give them a scholarship for this year, but put something together for next year and make sure they get the information early enough to where they can be prepared for it.
Maybe if we begin next year's budgeting, we kind of bring that forward then.
So then what I would want to do for council for this next council period is bring you the fee schedule back to approve those season pass rates, um, including that rate. Also bring you um something to improve the scholarship amount. And we can just go with thirty-five hundred, I think, to just cover more than eighty kids, which is where I've been thinking about. Comfortable for you guys?
If there's a consensus, it's ours.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
Right, well, thank you, everyone, for that discussion and all your work on that. I have number two, upcoming council meetings. That'll be the end here.
I can imagine, it takes a long. So May ninth, we have a proclamation for EMS Week, Rising is the Challenge. Uh, we have swim team contracts, classification and compensation schedules for the park and reg supervisors, a transfer of the bridges buildings. Um, I believe we may have to remove this anything, we'll just water line even if we don't have all the work done on that one. Um, and then SMC two dot five zero point one zero zero planning commission um occupation. And then Keller-Larback O'Leary settlement M.O.V. May twenty-third. We have the Franklin Court Watering Improvement Contract Award. And June sixth, we have the Enterprise Vehicle Program and then additional HR assistance.
Right, council members, if there's anything that needs to be added to the agenda, um, please speak to, I saw the city manager, uh, at least the week before, when we moved to Friday.
Sunday before the meeting, I think.
The Monday before the meeting, yeah, why hit Friday in this service? All right, there being no other business to come before council without objection. During this meeting at seven fifty-six P.M.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Rizucci. Thank you.